Here. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
This time, I'd like everyone to please stand. Today, we gather in solemn remembrance of a day that forever changed our lives and our world, September 11th, 2001. We honor the nearly 3,000 lives that were lost that day and the lives of the 9/11-related illnesses in the years that followed. Each life a cherished individual with dreams, hopes, and loved ones who still hold their memory dear. Let us reflect on the bravery of those who rushed into danger to save others, the resilience of families who faced unimaginable loss, and the unwavering support of unity that emerged in the face of despair. Let us extend our deepest gratitude to the brave people in uniform, our law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical technicians, military personnel, sorry, and countless other civilians who selflessly rushed into danger that day. Their heroism and dedication remind us that in times of crisis, it is our instinct to help one another, to lift each other up, and to stand firm against adversity. I invite you to join me in a moment of silence as we honor all lives lost and the families forever changed in this tragedy. May we keep their memory alive in our hearts and strive to embody the values of compassion, unity, and resilience that they inspired. Thank you. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. As from Playa Field Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coast, and the Star Ledger on January 22nd, 2024, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are in file with the city clerk. At this time, Lee, should you be able to go over special hunt applications?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Of the 10 applications before you, there are three that are new. The first one is the Pokemon in the park. I apologize, Mayor. Also Equality Emotion and the Noble Fest are three new requests before you this evening. Are there any questions on any of the applications?
What is Noble Fest?
It's a community festival that would be held in Springwood Park.
And who is organizing it?
I'm sorry?
Who is organizing it?
It's an individual gentleman from Neptune. Neptune resident.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Boz Anderson.
Good evening, and nothing for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
I'd just like to remind everyone that National Night Out is September 19th from 4:00 to 7:00 in Springwood Park. Hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes, on September 21st, the Quality of Life Committee is having their community festival. It's a family event. You can come out. There are going to be bounce houses, a petting zoo, rock climbing walls, food trucks, food giveaway, and new clothing giveaways. There will be free haircuts for kids and also free hair braiding for little girls. So if you're out on Saturday, September 21st, please join us and have a fun-filled day. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Tomorrow night, the city is having a mural input session at the Senior Center for a street mural that we're going to be doing, looking for input for that. I think it's 6:00 to 8:00. So if you can come out to the Senior Center and give some feedback on that.
Thanks. Mayor Moore.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the City Manager.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the City Attorney.
Nothing.
Thanks, Fred. We're now on to a presentation by APW Redeveloper LLC and Asbury Partners LLC for the redevelopment of Block 4302, Lot 201 and 203, 8th Avenue. Hi, Jen.
Good evening. For the record, I am Jennifer Philip Smith. I'm an attorney with Gibbons PC, and I am here tonight on behalf of Asbury Partners and its affiliate APW Redeveloper. We are seeking to be designated as the subsequent developer for the redevelopment of a portion of Block 4302. As most of you know, this was a lot that was previously and currently, at least temporarily, being used by the city for the beach operations lot. We have a short presentation this evening, but we have four people who will each put in a little input. We have our planner, our architect, our landscape architect, and our civil engineer. So I'd like to start by asking our architect to come forward. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll start with John Barry, our planner, going off script and confusing everyone. So John is going to start by giving us an overview of the location of the property and some of the existing conditions. So John, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Barry with the firm Hired, R, and Associates. I'm a professional planner in New Jersey. I've been before you and the planning board on a few occasions in the past. It's nice to be back again and been working with the team here on this project.
So if you could just tell us a little bit about the location of the proposed residential project.
Sure. So what we have here is an aerial image from 2022. It's a Google Earth image of the block on which the development site is located. We have Deal Lake Drive to the north, 8th Avenue to the south, Webb Street to the west, and Kingsley Street to the east. So there's two buildings on the block today. You have the 200 Deal Lake Drive building, the Kingsley Arms building as it was known. It's an eight-story residential building with a roof deck. And then the corner, the southwest corner of the block, we have the Miramar, a five-story residential condominium building. Going from the top left of the screen here around in a counterclockwise direction, you have some views of the site as it existed on April 29th of this year, and it's in pretty similar conditions today. Just seeing some of the storage, the temporary storage that various blocks and containers and equipment that's been on the property for a little while now. You have a view, number two, of the side of the Miramar building. You'll hear a little bit more about the development context during the architect's presentation. Number three here on the middle of the left side of the screen is a view of the front of the Miramar building from Webb Street. Moving down around to 8th Avenue, we have a view of the south side of the Miramar. At the time I took this picture, there was a bit of roadwork going on. Moving down to the bottom right is a shot from on the property, looking at the east side of the Miramar building. You have the two of the roughly the H or I-shaped segments of the building without windows and then set in. You have the window parts of the units in the Miramar. Number six is looking to the north at the south side of the 200 Deal Lake Drive building. Number seven, from roughly across the street near the parking lot at the senior tower, looking at the corner of the 200 Deal Lake Drive building. And then number eight, a straight-on view looking from Deal Lake Drive at the main front entrance to the tower. And then these are a few additional context shots of within the property, looking to the east and northeast at the senior tower, and then a few of the surrounding buildings. You have the North Shores Building, which is just to the south and across the street from the property.
Great. So one question I have before you move on. For this project, this lot, what would the maximum height be as permitted by the redevelopment plan?
Sure. So the redevelopment plan permits between six and eight stories in height as a maximum. Doesn't require that, but that's as tall as the buildings could be, which is eight stories is what we have for the 200 Deal Lake Drive and five stories is what we have for the Miramar.
And what is being proposed here?
The proposal before us this evening is a four-story building plus mezzanine, so it's a little bit taller than a straight four-story building. There's some roof access that you'll hear a little bit more about.
Great. That's all I have for Mr. Barry. Now, we will really move on to our architect. If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself to the council, although I know you've been here before.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adrian Media. I'm a partner at MV MK Architecture based in Hoboken.
Great. So we've been through the process here with the TRC, where we presented plans. And as you'll see tonight, we're going to show the plans as currently proposed, but also highlight some things that have changed since the TRC in order to work with the TRC's recommendations and to make the changes that were suggested. So if you could just start by running through the proposed two buildings on the site.
Yeah, so we're referring to this project as the views at North Shore, and our firm collaborated with the in-house architect, K. Hoffmannian, to design this block. If I go to the second sheet, which is a site plan, and this is the packet that was submitted to the council, it's dated 6/12/24. Again, we show the two buildings. They are mirrors of each other. One of them is located at the corner of Deal Lake Drive and Webb, and the other one is located at the corner of Kingsley Street and 8th Avenue. So these are the floor plans. Again, buildings are an exact mirror of each other. Each will be three stories of residential units over first-floor parking for a total of four stories. And there's a small mezzanine area right here that gives access to a roof deck. Each of the buildings has 44 covered parking spaces. Each has its own interior trash room in the garage. Each has a dedicated bike room that can store at least one bike per unit. And each has mailboxes and parcel lockers on the first floor here, right inside the main entry. Each building has 27 units. The breakdown is as follows: five 1-beds, 10 2-beds, and 12 3-beds, and they range from 750 square feet to 1,362 square feet. They also all have their own private deck, as well as sharing the common rooftop amenity. Sheet number four, this is talking about the building style now, so the architecture is an interpretation of the Mediterranean Revival style. You can see it uses a lot of facade symmetry, arched windows, balconies with metal railings, faux roof tile, and a neutral color palette. This design is a strong nod to the city's historical past while also echoing nearby structures. Some of the architectural influences that inspired the views at North Shore aesthetics come from its historical landmarks, including the Santa Nera condominium, the Charms Building, the United States Post Office, and the Hotel Monterey. You can see some of those directly behind you on the wall. Next sheet. So this is the materials. The color palette is white-beige terracotta. The materials we're proposing are predominantly maintenance-free hardy panels in large format sizes, resemble stucco. We're proposing a desert beige-coated concrete base. There's balcony brackets supporting cantilever balconies with metal rails, and the metal roof is a durable terracotta color in a barrel tile profile. Engineered materials are used for faux vents and pergola elements at the roof level. Onto the rendering. So this is sheet six. This is the view of the intersection at Kingsley and 8th Avenue. And I'll point out a number of revisions have been made based on TRC comments. So the original renderings were included up here in the top corner, and I can zoom in for comparison. In this view, you can see that significant landscaping, including taller trees, have been added to the frontage. So it was a little more sparsely populated on the previous slide. So we added those. And also, there's an ADA ramp here, and it's been since concealed with planter walls. Sheet seven, this is a view of the elevation along Kingsley Street. Some of the revisions made at the suggestion of the TRC were to shift the wheelchair a little bit over to the side and more center these entry steps. They were over to the right a little bit. You can see it up here. Also, in the original iteration, there was two sets of steps with a knee wall between them, and the recommendation was to make it one large set of steps and to return the walls in at each side. Sheet number eight, this is looking southwest along Kingsley Street. The garage access was here at one point. You can see where it's, there's trees either side of it here. So what we did was we eliminated those. We combined the access into the surface parking between the two buildings. So where we had four driveways originally, now we only have two. So this is now not a driveway, it's a landscaped terrace area. Sheet number nine, this is looking northeast along 8th Avenue. So you can see here the parking garage where it was previously accessed from the street. You now have to go through between the buildings and access from the interior of the lot. You can also note we added rooftop plantings where we didn't have them previously. Sheet 10, this is looking southwest along Deal Lake Drive. Again, same thing. The buildings are mirrored, so it's the same condition for each one. The garage entry was moved off the street to the side of the building, and larger trees were added in front in the landscaped areas. Next slide, this is looking from Deal Lake directly at the north building. Same changes were made. The entry was centered. The lift providing ADA access was shifted over, and same callouts, rooftop plantings were added, and the landscaped terraces. Just more views. It's the same thing, just in reverse for the other building. Sheet 13, this is an aerial looking southwest. So this is Deal Lake. You can see a rooftop view of the buildings and how they relate to the two existing buildings on the block. Note the common roof decks are located as far as possible from those buildings to mitigate Lastly, sheets 14 and 15 illustrate the same thing, roof decks located as far away as possible from those adjoining buildings. Same notes added, landscaped trees in the buffered area between the lot and the building, and rooftop plantings added.
Great. Unless there's questions related to architecture, I was going to ask Mr. Curly to come up to talk about some of the other site civil conditions. Mr. Curly, I know you've been here before as well, but if you could just introduce yourself for the record.
Robert Curly. For Colliers Engineering, I'm the project engineer on the project.
Okay. So let's talk a little bit about the site design, and I'd like to start by just talking about how the buildings are oriented on the site and what their total setbacks are, you know, from the property lines, but then also from the curb lines.
So one of the items that I wanted to bring up even before we talk about that has to do with the overall parking on the project. The required parking for this portion of the redevelopment area is two stalls per dwelling unit, and that would require then, excuse me, a total of 108 parking stalls. We are proposing 109, and those are within the building and the surface parking. One of the modifications that we were requested to do was to change the building access as was the original design to eliminate some of the driveways that we had entering onto Deal Lake Drive and also on the Kingsley Street. In doing so, excuse me, in doing so, we were able to not impact as much of the existing on-street parking. So the existing on-street parking that exists today is surrounding the entire block are 40 parking stalls. What we're proposing after the development, there would be 35. Now, with our previous design, we were actually losing another additional five stalls due to the driveway access. So that helps the on-street parking situation, and we're still compliant in regard to the overall number of parking stalls when you include the credits that we get for EV stalls. So to let everyone understand the setbacks for the existing or for the proposed buildings, on Deal Lake Drive, our building is setback 24.3 feet from the right-of-way or 42.9 feet to the proposed curb line. On Kingsley Street, our setback is 24.3 feet or 36.7 feet from the curb line. On 8th Avenue, our setback is 7.1 feet from the right-of-way line or 17.25 feet from the curb line. And on Webb Street, our setback is 11.6 feet or 22.33 feet to the building, building to curb, excuse me.
And if you could address maybe the spacing between the proposed buildings and the existing buildings on the site.
So there's the spacing in between building number A, which is located at 8th and Webb, and the Miramar building, is 15.4 feet between the two buildings, which is what we're proposing. And then from building A to the Kingsley Arms is 33 and 1/2 feet between the two buildings. For building B, the setback from the Miramar, and this would be to the closest point, would be 46 feet between the two buildings, but actually the area that has the windows, which would be in the center portion of the building, is 60 feet separation between these two buildings. And then the setback from the Kingsley Arms to building B, which is B on the southerly wall of the Kingsley Arms, is 20.6 feet. One of the other modifications that we accomplished with review comments from the TRC, again, had to do with the elimination of driveway entrances that we had previously shown, exiting out onto the roadways. And what we also accomplished were to create terraces along the street scape, the proposed street scape, and provide seat walls along pretty much the entire building frontage. And those seat walls would be 2 and 1/2 feet tall. And the idea behind that was to not have to require fall prevention, so anything 30 inches or less, you don't need fall protection. So again, we have retaining walls ringing the perimeter of the buildings, and it provides for a landscaped area between the sidewalk and the building to shade a little bit of the garage area that's incorporated into the design. One of the aspects of the overall engineering design had to do with flood hazard compliance and making sure that we had our garage parking area above the flood hazard elevation. And that's what drove pretty much the grading for the project. And we are compliant, and this has been submitted to the DEP for their final comments.
Can you describe the interior circulation and how it's been revised?
Yes. So again, previously, we had access from the street onto, into the parking garage, and then we also had separate surface parking. Currently, we're showing one-way circulation with an entrance off of Deal Lake Drive, and that could access building A, and then continue on through the parking field to access building B. Oops, excuse me. To access building B. And then to exit the site, you would just come out onto 8th Avenue.
Did you say it's one-way?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's one-way circulation. So one of the other items that, just so that the board can understand, the layout that we have shown on the plan includes the infrastructure improvements that'll be completed with the development in this area. And those plans are pretty much complete, and if they're not submitted to the city, they will be within the next day.
And that's subject to the City Council approving the bump-out areas?
That's correct.
Which is something that will come before the City Council to consider separately. Okay. Well, that's it. That's all I have for Mr. Curly. I have one more.
Quick question?
Sure.
The seat walls, are they inside the city right-of-way or outside the city right-of-way?
They are on the city right-of-way, so they are outside of the city right-of-way.
They're on the private property.
On the property, yeah, correct.
They're on the property. Okay, thank you.
All right. And I'm just going to ask our landscape architect to wrap up with just a description of the Mr. Leff, if you could please just introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening. My name is Brian Leff. I'm a licensed landscape architect and the president of BML Studio.
We've heard a good deal about the building so far, but can you just talk about the landscaping, both as it's proposed, and sort of point out what's been changed in response to the TRC's comments?
Yes. The other professionals actually did a very good job of describing the changes. It makes my life a little bit easier. From a landscape perspective, all of the plants that are being selected are salt-tolerant, number-one criteria. Most of them are native to New Jersey, although there are a few plants, such as hydrangeas and knockout roses, that aren't necessarily native but are very traditional to the shore landscape, nothing unique that you haven't seen before. The key changes to this plan, as was previously mentioned, was, the main change, I should say, was the elimination of the driveways off of the street directly into the building. From a landscape perspective, that opened up a lot of opportunity to add more plants, dress up the building, make it a little less institutional. Originally, we also had open space paved areas at the corners, intended for use by the residents, but there was nothing blocking it from the public. In our discussions, it was determined that that space would be better used as green space and to dress up the building a little more, to add some more landscaping. And that's where those seat walls come into play. Rather than have a A grade sitting area, we raised everything up, provided the sitting area around the perimeter with some nice landscaping behind it to soften it up. There was a request to add limestone caps to all of the walls to ensure that they're wide enough that you can sit on, so it's not just an eight-inch-wide concrete wall, or I'm sure you've all seen those around. These would be attractive. The entrance, I actually really liked the suggestion that came in to make one wider set of stairs than two smaller entry stairs going into the main building. I think that really adds a nice look to it, and I think it just brings it up to the next level. The walls do continue along all the frontages, so you will have sittable area around the entire project. I believe that's really what's new.
I think that covers it. So that concludes our presentation, unless there are questions from the council.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have nothing.
No, but we're going to open up to the public, so I'm sure you're going to... No, but we're going to open up to the public, so I'm sure you're going to stick around to answer any questions they have.
We'll be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I motion open meeting to the public?
Move.
On favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone. State your name and address for the record. There will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your name and address.
Hi, I'm Darren Melberger. Live at 1700 Webb, Miramar. We live on the north face, the lakeside. So, my question is to the project engineer or the architect, you're providing 15-foot offset from our window to your building. That seems rather small. What is, what's the requirement for an offset from a building, code, city code-wise? Local code?
Stuff in the club.
The waterfront redevelopment zone allows for a zero lot line, so we could actually be another 60 feet.
So, so, we're, we have windows facing your building. Obviously, the apartment complex, the eight-story building, there's windows facing south, ours face north. You're, this building is clearly going to shade our area, change our sunlight, obviously our view. Was there any consideration of using that area as a parking drive instead of a building? You know, you, you have like an L-shaped building, the north building's L-shaped. Would it, was there any consideration of making it a rectangle, and perhaps having parking there instead of a building that's shading the, the Miramar property? But you have a nice big open area, I guess. You have a nice parking area that's not, it's like, it doesn't, there's no view from anybody's windows in a parking, right? There's hardly any view. The, the Miramar building, north, the northeast side of the building doesn't have windows, yet we have 60 feet of offset to the next building, which is actually the existing building. So, you didn't change that at all, but you decided to put the building, your building, very close to Miramar, given us 15-foot offset. So, I'm just bringing that up as a concern. I think it changes our, our sunlight, changes our whole world, right? Obviously, our view, but our view, I understand our view can be compromised. I didn't think that our shade could be compromised, and our sunlight. The other question, I don't know if anybody has a comfortable response to that.
Just so that the, the council can understand that the, the layout that has been proposed was set up in order to, and, and to ensure that we were compliant with the required parking. And that was to make sure that we had a minimum of two parking stalls per unit.
Okay. You do have underground parking in both, under the structure parking as well, it's not just this open area that we see.
And that, that is, that is included in the total 100?
So, if you, I guess my point is if you added parking on the north side, the south side of your north building next to our windows, that would add some spaces, and maybe you could change the offset to our building. You could get, I don't know how many spaces there. If you offset it 40 feet, you could do some diagonal parking like you have everywhere else that you're proposing. Looks like you have some, well, I'll save that for the next comment.
Do you want to respond to that?
On the, on the 8th Avenue side, the south.
Three minutes.
Just one question.
Go ahead.
On the 8th Avenue side, you have, like you said, you're doing some roadway improvements. You have, you're changing, one thing you're changing, the diagonal parking is on the south side of the building, of the roadway currently. You're adding diagonal parking to the north side to get more parking spots, I suppose, right, of that 8th Avenue street?
I, I can answer that one. It's, the changes on the street are actually required by the Infrastructure Component Report, which is a document that the City Council adopted. So, even if this building were designed differently, that parking layout would be as reflected.
Okay. Currently, it's a parallel park.
Correct, correct.
Okay. And one of your slides, the last slide, showed a building on the big open lot south of that 8th Avenue. I think that rendering is wrong if you were to go to the last slide. I can point it out.
That, that was showing a building that's proposed?
Proposed building.
Right. It does, I agree with you, it doesn't exist today.
Yeah. You probably get it wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. If it pleases the council, may I make a statement on behalf of a homeowner that couldn't make it?
Sure, just your, your name and address.
My name's Allison Marshall, 305 8th Avenue.
Thank you.
This is on behalf of the Healy Sizurek household. Within a matter of feet on 8th Avenue, Asbury Partners is slated to build almost 100 townhomes, condos, residential units, including this project they're discussing tonight. 94, 94 in total multimillion-dollar dwellings that will not pay taxes for 30 years. 94 dwellings that will allow our schools to lose funding, and the homeowners and renters to pick up the slack, just as all the other condos and townhouses that have come from this redevelopment. They'll build these 94 dwellings on tiny parcels of land stolen through eminent domain that were then defaulted to Asbury Partners 15 years ago, pretty confident they've made their money back on those loans and then some. Their developments do not pay their fair share. They bombard our neighborhoods with their copy-and-paste housing. They drive up gentrification, allow our historic buildings to crumble into the ocean, ignore any ecological alarms in order to make as much money as they possibly can before the next big storm. I think it is clear they have proven time and time again that they are not good neighbors and do not have any real vested interest in what our city is besides making enormous profit. Just because there aren't 15,000 people in this room right now due to many factors, including the woman I'm speaking on the behalf of, I guarantee you there is not one resident or homeowner in this city that is saying, oh, yay, more monoculture eyesore townhomes and condos going up for a 30-year tax abatement in 2024. And I stand behind all of that. I know our opinions here tonight are simply opinions. We don't have legal cause to stop you from doing it. My one hope is that it takes you as long to pass this as it does for you to finish 8th Avenue roadwork. Thank you.
I agree with you. The, the roadwork on 8th Avenue was the road from hell.
I thank you for putting up with all my emails.
No.
And responding.
And, as was stated before, this was agreed upon many years ago.
Yes.
And, you know, called for, I'm going to have the wrong number, but I'm going to be close, like for 3,200 potential units, and it's going to be cut down to about 2,000, which is good. And where this building could be six to eight stories by pre-earliest agreement, it's only four in a mezzanine. So, uh...
May I speak for one more moment on behalf of myself, since there's probably anyone here, just one quick statement?
Yeah, you didn't use your whole three minutes, so you got a minute.
It is, it's just about the, the 30-year tax abatement. That's what goes upside with it.
Again, it's, it's, it's...
And I know that's part of the redevelopment.
It's a legal binding document that we can't not unilaterally get out of.
I understand that.
And we've asked them to renegotiate, and they said, no, we're happy, so.
Yeah, that, because that's, I, when I first moved here in 2008, my rent was $900, and that same place that I lived is $3,500. And a lot of that has to do with the tax abatement, and I have, I'm absorbing that as well as other renters.
Okay, I don't know if it has to do with the tax abatements, but you made your point.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to be heard? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Helen Yun. I live in Miramar on 1700 Webb, 1B. My husband just spoke about the distance between our building to the next building. Literally, when that happens, the building is going to be on my face. I'm not going to have any breathing, it's going to, literally, we're not going to have any privacy. It's very, very stressful for me. But another thing I really wanted to speak about was the parking. Right now, there are some changes, and they took away a lot of residential parking, and because, and then because of that, we have less parking. And then, on top of it, this new development, I don't think they could provide every parking need for all the tenants. That means there's going to be even less parking. And a lot of people on 8th Avenue, and everybody in Miramar, we don't have designated parking space. We're already having problems as it is, and when this happens, everybody on 8th Avenue, Webb Street, people who live, live on Kingsley, they're going to have a lot of problem with parking. And this is very concerning, because already by Friday night, after like 6 o'clock, I cannot find parking. I have to rotate street by street, good 10, 15, 20 minutes, especially somewhere, you could, I, you know, I can't move my car after, after Friday. And I don't know if you could provide more residential parking in the area, or have some kind of arrangement? What am I going to do with my car? I, we only have one car between us. It's not like we own two cars. And I, I don't know what's going to happen when, when this happens. And it's very stressful for me. Parking's stressful, more people's stressful, my windows getting blocked is stressful. I live on first floor. I'm not going to have any sunlight. I'm not going to, I don't really care about the view, but literally, their wall, or somebody else's window, is going to be on my face. That's really stressful. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to be heard on any subject, not just this building, but anything in the city?
I just, I just would like, um... Hi, my name is Robin Singer, and I'm a landlord for, in an apartment in Miramar, which I purchased about four years ago. Taxes went from 5,600, now they're close, they're well over 8 a year. I just wanted to know when this project is expected to be started and when it's expected to be finished.
If they know the answer, they're answered. If not, at the planning board, they will.
Do you have a rough, a rough idea?
Yeah.
Yeah. As far as getting started, we still have a ways to go, because we, after this, we do have to have a, the City Council act, and then appear at the planning board, and that takes a number of months. Once we start the planning board, typically, I think it's a less than two-year process for construction.
So, two years of construction?
Two, two and a half years of construction, once we start. But again, we have more steps to go before we get the approvals in order to start.
Okay. Also, I know when you guys, whoever was cleaning out the back parking area with all the junk and then the garbage cans, which I'm glad that they're gone, my apartment's on the first floor, and all the air conditioning units were on the first floor. So, they were, a lot of them had caked in dust and grime and stuff stuck into the units. We had to pay for an HOA guy to come there, clean them out. Once you start digging and doing all that other stuff, will you guys be responsible? Or, or, you know, whatever happens, happens, it's just the fact of life that, or will be some kind of protection for the units back there when you're doing the work?
So, I can't speak to the move-out, because I know that that was city equipment being moved off to another location, but I imagine there could be some construction coordination at the time that construction would commence.
I will find you.
And there's also a requirement for soil erosion and sediment control, and we, that's one of the approvals that we ultimately have to obtain, and those provisions and requirements will be on the site before we start construction.
Okay. Okay. And what's the price point? That means, curious.
I, I don't actually know that yet, but we...
We haven't established the prices yet.
Saying million-plus range, or...
We will have to provide that information to, to the city in connection with later requests involving financial documents, but we haven't submitted that yet, and it sounds like we don't, haven't firmly established it yet.
1% of 1%.
I just want to, did, did you say the construction will be two and a half years? Is that what you...
Oh, approximately two to two and a half years, yes.
Because the two buildings won't start simultaneously.
Yeah, there's going to be a gap between the construction buildings. It's approximately three to four months between one building. The plan is to start the building on the northwest corner first, and then proceed to the next building after that on the, on the southeast corner.
And just for the record, those at home, that's Carl Earler with K. Hovnani, and answering questions about the construction phasing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, motion to close?
On favor? Aye. Public participation is now closed.
Just one thing for everybody, like, this is not step one, because obviously, step one was TRC, where the people on the TRC committee didn't like some of the things, didn't like losing 10 parking spots on the street. So, changed the entrances, exits, changed some of the steps, make them wider. And, you know, TRC's just a presentation, but you'll have another big bite at the apple when they go to the planning board, and you'll be notified about that, and I don't see that happening before the end of the year.
I, I don't know. It depends on the planning board's schedule.
We don't know the planning board's schedule either, how many applicants they have before them. But that's where, like, some of the questions ask, and did you guys do a study on shade?
We have not done a shade study, because we're providing more than what's required under the plan.
Okay. That, that question may come up at the planning board level, too, so just giving you a heads-up, like, you know, it's a valid question, so. So, again, you will be notified when that does happen, and you'll be able to ask much more than three minutes' worth of questions. Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on to the minutes.
Thank you.
Hang on a second.
Yep, a couple minutes.
That's fine. Yeah. I think she stays because she's, she's questions about special. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, we're now on to the minutes. I have municipal council executive session and regular meeting minutes of the August 14, 2024 meeting. Do I have a motion? Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Now on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2024-407, resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-408, resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of an HVAC system for the police department evidence rooms.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-410, resolution authorizing purchase of ammunition for the police department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-409, resolution authorizing the purchase of personal protection turnout gear for the fire department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-410, resolution authorizing purchase of ammunition for the police department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-411, resolution ordering the purchase of snow fencing needed at the beach to Robco Supply LLC.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-412, Resolution Authorizing Design Services and Contract Administration Services to Dynamic Traffic LLC for safe routes to, safe routes to transit, intersection upgrades, and traffic signal installation at Cookman Avenue and Bond Street.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-413, Resolution Authorizing the Annual Renewal of Vector Scheduling Software for the Fire Department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson. Council, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-414, Resolution Authorizing the City of Asbury Park to Implement the Competitive Contracting Process to Procure the Software and Management Concerning the Scheduling, Fee Structure, Payment Processing, and Record Keeping of Off-Duty Police Detail Administration within the city.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-415, Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Short-Term Rental Permitting Software Needed for Code Enforcement.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-416, Resolution Amending Resolution 2023-438 in the Contract with S. Brothers for Roadway Improvement Program.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-417, Resolution Amending the Scope of Engineering Services to be performed by CDM Smith Incorporated relating to the design of Phase 1 Waste Water Treatment Plant Improvements in order to include system resiliency, waste water treatment plant breakroom, structural improvements for belt thickener access, improvements for screenings, effluent pump check valve replacement, and additional structural analysis. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-418, Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Asbury Park to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Public Resources Advisory Group for the Provision of RAB Administration for PHM Sunset Square, I'm sorry, Sunset Park Urban Renewal LLC, Pulte Block 4205. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-419, Resolution Approving Change Order Number 2 for the 2022 Roadway Improvement Program.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-420, Resolution Improving Change Order Number 11 for Memorial Drive Improvements Project.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-421, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of an Indemnification and Hold-Harless Agreement with New York SNSA Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-422, Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Asbury Park Authorizing the Use of the Properties Located at 512 Summerfield Avenue and 514 Summerfield Avenue as a parking lot on an interim basis and authorizing the entry of an interim parking agreement between Sacman Asset Management LLC and the City of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-423, Resolution of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Asbury Park to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with BJH Advisors for the Provision of RAB Administration for PHM Sunset Park Urban Renewal LLC, Pulte Block 4205. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-424, Resolution of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Asbury Park to Enter Into a Second Amendment of the Subsequent Developer Agreement with Asbury Partners LLC as master developer in Somerset Asbury Park in connection with the redevelopment of that certain real property located at Block 4105, Lot 1.01, 1209 Ocean and 115 Fourth Avenue in the City of Asbury Park, just formerly Block 4105, Lots 1, 2, and a portion of Lot 3. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-425, Supplemental Resolution Authorizing the Issments of One or More Series of Additional Nonrecourse Redevelopment Area Bonds of the City of Asbury Park in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3 million waterfront redevelopment area infrastructure project in connection with the project being undertaken in the city by PHM Sunset Square Urban Renewal LLC and as a portion of the nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds of the city previously approved pursuant to a resolution duly adopted by the City Council on February 20, 2013. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Same.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-426, Resolution Amending the Muted Parking Requirements in the City for November 2024 and December 2024. Question, do you just want to announce what that is?
Move it. Somebody second.
Second.
No questions?
Question. James, you just want to say what they are, I mean, we do it every year, but you wanted to say what it is so people know?
Sure.
Say it, Mayor. Thank you, James.
This resolution provides free parking in the Bank Avenue Garage all of November and December, as well as makes free parking on Saturdays between 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thanks, James.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-427, Resolution Authorizing the City of Asbury Park to Accept and Assist to Firefighter Grant AFG from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA relating to confined space emergencies and authorizing the city to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Long Branch Fire Department and the Wall Township Fire District Number 3 and further ins thereof. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances for second reading, public hearing. I have ordinance 2024-28, Ordinance of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth and the State of New Jersey Authorizing the Execution of a First Amendment to a Lease Agreement with Asbury Partners LLC, Cajun Fish Holdings LLC, and AP5 Prop Holdings LLC for certain property within the Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment area. Before I open this up to public hearing, Michelle, nobody's there. Our Director of Planning and Redevelopment, Michelle Alonso, will provide a brief overview of this ordinance. Thank you, Michelle.
This is basically a retro lease agreement for See Here Now. We had to move our beach equipment back to the previous lot, actually the one presented tonight, until See Here Now is over, then it's going to go to the lot next to the sewer plant where we have the current lease agreement.
Thank you, Michelle. May I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2024-28?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-28 is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-28 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-28?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-29, Ordinance Establishing a Restricted Parking Space for Use by Handicap Persons in the City of Asbury Park along Bond Street and Amending and Supplementing Chapter 7-36 entitled Handicap Parking of Chapter 7 Traffic. Other revised general ordinances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Our Director of Transportation, James Banano, will provide a brief overview of this ordinance.
Move it.
Second.
James, James, wait a minute, we gotta wait it.
It's pretty self-explanatory, and so you're gonna explain both of them.
Both of them at once?
Yeah.
Sure. So this ordinance and the following ordinance are both placing a handicap parking space in front of residents' homes, one along Bond Street, one along Summerfield Avenue. They are at the request of the residents who provided their documentation to the Police Department who recommended they receive these spaces.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to open up the public hearing on ordinance 2024-29?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-29 is now open.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-29 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-29?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-30, Ordinance Establishing a Restricted Parking Space for Use by Handicap Persons Residing at 1515 Summerfield Avenue in the City of Asbury Park and Amending and Supplementing Section 7-36 entitled Handicap Parking of Chapter 7 Traffic of the Rise General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. May I have a motion to open up the public hearing on 2024-30?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to close.
Second.
Does someone second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing now closed on ordinance 2024-30. Motion to adopt ordinance 2024-30.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
If anyone has anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.